The heading is "The Fear of Sex Spoils the Pleasure of Being Touched." So that's what we're doing, we're reading, wait, we're not reading, we're discussing The Vortex book by Esther and Jerry Hicks. And we are on page 127. The heading is "Fear of Sex Spoils the Pleasure of Being Touched." So this is a question Jerry is asking Abraham. And the question is, "Abraham, I would like to read to you some questions that people have asked you. These are real-life examples that are happening with people. And I'd like to hear your responses relative to the laws and processes that you have been teaching us." A young woman says, "My mother and I are both uncomfortable with sex. We don't like hearing about it, reading about it, seeing it on television, or participating in it." "I guess as a result of my mother's strong negative feelings about sex, I now have fear anytime my mate even touches me that it might turn to having sex. I want a good marriage, but how can I enjoy the sensual part or the touching part without this fear that it will push on into the sexual part?" Hmm. I wonder if she was that afraid, why did she end up getting married in the first place? Hmm, beliefs are so complicated, right? Hi to Mika, good to see you. Alright. So Abraham's response is, "Some people would feel sorry for her husband because of her attitude, and other people would sympathize with her." And that is because there is really no right or wrong. There is no right or wrong about her wanting, not wanting to be touched, and there's no right or wrong about her husband's attitude either. So what Abraham is saying, and I'm reading from page 128, they're saying, "There is no rule about right or wrong sexual behavior as far as the law of attraction is concerned. A strong pattern of negative emotion attached to a specific subject means that you've chronically been thinking negatively about it." So in this case of this woman who's asking this question, she says that her mother has the same attitude. So probably this attitude is something she picked up at a very young age from her mother. So if it was actively thought about, then she's got a lot of momentum going on. And that momentum is the issue. Then Abraham says, "Your feeling of guilt was instead..." Hmm, okay, hang on. Before I get to that. So when she engages in touching, or sensuality, or sexuality, she has a feeling of guilt associated with it now because in her opinion, it's not the right way to do things. If you have a belief that something that you're doing is not good, that creates stress on you. So Abraham says, "Your feeling of guilt was instead a simple indicator that your conclusion about your inappropriateness was very different from source." What does that mean? So what Abraham is saying is, because you feel uneasy about the topic of sensuality and sexuality, what is that unease telling you? That unease is telling you that the source inside you, your inner being, does not see the topic of sexuality and sensuality in a negative way, whereas you do. So now you're creating a separation between you and your inner being. That is only, that is only the reason ever that we feel bad about anything is when our opinion about it, or the way we are looking at it, deviates from the way source is looking at it. So now in her interpretation was not this. Her interpretation was, "Oh, I'm feeling bad about it, there must be something bad in it." And Abraham is saying, "That's not the case. You're feeling bad about it not because there's something bad in it inherently, you are feeling bad about it because of your negative beliefs about it." That's a very different situation. So the source inside you is telling you to close the gap. That's the guidance that is coming in when you feel bad about it. Use that guidance to stop pushing against it. You don't have to engage in sex, but you have to stop pushing against your husband. Because for as long as you say that his attitude is inappropriate and he should change, he should not want sex, then that pushing against is what's pulling you apart. Alright, um, let's keep going. So then on page 129, I'm going to read from the book. Abraham says, right at the top, first paragraph, "If you have decided that a particular behavior is wrong, you will always feel worse if you perform it." Because you have decided. And when you go against your beliefs, you don't feel good. The thing is that your belief is now controlling your actions and your behavior. So you have to ask yourself whether that belief is worth having in the sense that is it limiting you? Is it, is it keeping you from being happy? And if it is keeping you from being happy, then don't discard the action, discard the belief. But often, people don't do that. When they feel bad, they feel that the thing that they're looking at is bad. And so they have to find a way to get away from it. And that you can never get away from it. Okay, so then Abraham says, "Your life becomes very complicated as you try to sort that out through putting behaviors in categories of right and wrong, good or bad." Because as far as law of attraction is concerned, there is no right or wrong, good or bad. It's just a matching of vibration. It's just a matching mechanism. There's no right or wrong. Source never judges, God never judges, the action as being right or wrong. So then Abraham says, and I'm reading again from the book, on page 129, the second paragraph, "For example, if you believe that a good wife is one who tries to cooperate with her husband, you would feel bad by not yielding to his sexual desires. If you believe that sexual interaction is wrong, then by yielding to your husband's sexual desires, you would also feel bad. So whether you say yes or no to his request, you will feel bad. And that's going to lead you to the conclusion that he is wrong and he should change and he should stop wanting sexual interaction. But you don't have any control over that. You don't control what he should or should not want, you don't control what he should or should not like. So now you're pushing against him. So when you push against something, you're coming from a place of lack." And Abraham says, "Let us also say that you spend no time thinking about what you do not want regarding the subjects, so there's no active vibration within you about it." Hmm, so if you stop thinking about the subject of sex, so you see here, this woman started, the question was that she's always afraid of, she's always afraid of her husband's touch. That means that she's always thinking about it. When is it going to happen? What will I do if it happens? What if, what if, what if? And all of it is creating anxiety inside her. So what Abraham is saying is, if you just get off the subject, then you won't have that negative vibration inside you. And under those conditions, the powerful law of attraction would bring to you a partner who is in complete agreement with you, and you would have no struggle in living your most compatible life. See? So it's all about vibration, and it's all about what are you keeping active in your head? That's really what it is all about. Okay, so then Abraham is also talking about the reverse. Abraham is talking about the woman and what she actually went through, which is that at a very young age, her mother convinced her that sex was, there was something wrong with having sex. Well, now you're keeping that thought active, you're pushing against it, then law of attraction is just going to bring you the opposite of what you want. Because what you want is a partner who is not interested in sex, but because you're pushing against it, you're actually going to attract the opposite of it. You're going to attract someone who wants more of it. So then Abraham says, uses their, Abraham is using their golden words, you know, when they say you can't, you cannot get there from there, which means you can't have something unless you vibrate in accordance with that wish. And in the end of this section, Abraham is saying, "Don't condemn something that your source does not condemn." So source does not condemn sexual interaction. If you condemn it, then you are out of alignment. Because source, it's not just about sex. Source does not condemn anything. Source does not condemn any action only humans do. Source just says, "Okay, move on, what's next?" So I'm just going to read from the book. "The majority of negative emotions that you feel are not because the subject of your thought is wrong, but instead because you are condemning something that your source does not condemn. Your source is one of love, not of condemnation." And then in the end, they say, "We have never seen a physical human who was in alignment with source who was repulsed by physical interaction. Repulsion is an indication of disconnection." Now, listen carefully because I want to make a distinction here. It's not whether you enjoy sex or you don't enjoy sex. It's about being repulsed. When you are repulsed by something, that is a clear indication that you are low on the emotional scale. So if I hold the pen up, and the emotion, and this is the emotional scale, repulsion from something is very close to fear. Hatred, I'm repulsed, that's a form of hatred. So that's low on the emotional scale, and that is an indication of your lack of alignment. Alignment is up here. And if you were aligned, then you would attract into your life someone who has the same belief systems because they are on the same vibration as you. So, um, so let me read that again because it's really important. "We have never seen a physical human who was in alignment with source who was repulsed by physical interaction. Repulsion is an indication of disconnection." So repulsion, whether you want it, you desire it or not, that's different. But repulsion is pushing against, and that is in a different category. Now, moving on to the next section, Jerry's next question to Abraham is, and the heading is called "We Can Always Have a Fresh Start." Jerry says, "Abraham, before meeting you, I described life as a moving along a path that had many possible branches that forked this way and that way." I also felt the same way. I, I, I remember when I was in my, I want to say first year university, that I actually drew a diagram for someone that I was talking to to explain how life works, and I drew a tree diagram just like you have in statistics. "I could choose this branch of the path or that one, and if I ever found myself at a point where life didn't feel right, I could just backtrack." Now there's the difference. I never thought we could backtrack. I just thought you do, you follow along a path and you reach another branching off because another decision is required. So Jerry says, "I could just backtrack to the last fork in the road and then perhaps choose a better path. But it seems like you're saying that I don't have to double back and that I could just start fresh anytime." Abraham says, "The thing that your analogy does not factor in is that during this time of your trial, your trail, that you were not having a good time, as it was not feeling right, you were sending out vibrational rockets of desires." So when you send out rockets of desire, you are creating new possibilities, and that's why the path is branching out again. You just need to make a new decision. You just need to make a new decision. You don't need to go backwards. You can stand where you are and make a new decision. Because decisions are the forking out place of life. So make a new decision and a new path will open up. So then Jerry says, "How does one regain the frequency of pleasurable sexuality?" Now we're getting into a different question. This time the question is coming from the husband. It's the husband of a person who does not like to engage in physical interaction. Let me read the question to you. So Jerry is saying, "On the other side of the question posed by the young woman we just discussed, there's a gentleman who says, 'For the first three months of our marriage, my wife and I had sex three or four times every day. But now after a few years, it has actually reached the point that the activity of sex is distasteful to my wife. And so if I don't make it happen, it just doesn't happen. She's not interested in any form of mental stimulation like words, films, or books. She won't allow anything that would shift her focus in that direction. I don't want to have sex with her if she doesn't enjoy it because if it is not pleasurable for her, it's not pleasurable for me. What thoughts must I change in order to change the experience that I'm having?'" And as I was reading this, I was thinking, "Oh my God, you know, this is probably behind so many marital issues." So let's read what Abraham is saying. Abraham is saying that there are, "Many people find themselves in troubling situations where there seems to be no viable solution." So what are the possible viable solutions in this case? Or really not viable solutions, but what are the possibilities? So the first one is, "I could go along with not having sex, and that does not feel good." Then the second option for the man is, "I can leave my wife and find another partner who is more compatible, and that doesn't feel good." Number three, "I could stay in the marriage and have an extramarital affair where someone else provides me with the sexual satisfaction, and that's not acceptable because if my wife finds out, she's not going to condone it." And number four, "I could try to convince her, or even assert pressure to move her in the direction of my desires." So none of these four choices feel good. And Abraham says, "None of them feel good because none of them are actually addressing the real problem." When two people are in love, Abraham says, "They are in alignment." Because what is alignment? Alignment is being in a place of love. So Abraham says that when that happens, they are using each other as a catalyst that causes them both to align with their respective inner beings. And when you're aligned with your inner being, then that's the absolute best place that you can be. And anything that you do from that place of being high on the emotional scale is always going to feel good to you. So Abraham is saying, "There is no greater symbol of co-creative harmony than the physical blending of two people in sexual interaction." There is no greater symbol of co-creative harmony than the physical blending of two people in sexual interaction. But that is only going to happen if both those people are high on the emotional scale. So in the beginning of a relationship, when the relationship is new, people are more appreciative of each other. When they are more appreciative of each other, they haven't yet found fault with each other. They are both high on the emotional scale, and love is flowing from both sides. Then as they start living together, you didn't put your dishes away. Why are your socks on the ground? You see, these are now, these are not big things. People would argue and say, "Well, that shouldn't affect anything." But it does. Because now you're not seeing that person as perfect. You're seeing them as having made a mistake of some sort. You're finding fault with them. And when you find fault with a person, you're not high on the emotional scale anymore with respect to them. So the longer people spend time together, unless they are actually consistently doing the work to appreciate the other person for things that they really, really enjoy about the other person, then they are going to naturally go down the emotional scale. And from when you're low on the emotional scale, then nothing feels good. And what if the wife has gone down further than the man has gone down? Maybe she's gone really down. And if that is the case, she's not going to enjoy sexual interaction with him. So what is the answer? The answer is to find something to appreciate. But the most interesting thing here is what Abraham is recommending that the husband should do. Because we're talking to the husband, we're not talking to the wife. If we were talking to the wife, it would be a completely different discussion. But what can the husband do so that this situation can improve for him? Well, the thing is, now, now he has gone down the emotional scale because he is calling her behavior wrong. He is saying that she should change her behavior. Well, you know what? That's the thing. You cannot affect anyone else's behavior. You can't ask anyone else to change who they are. The only person you have control over is you. And so if your partner is not on the same wavelength as you, you have, that means that you have to appreciate your partner more. That's all it means. And so, um, basically that's the answer. The more he appreciates his wife, then she is going to go up the emotional scale because now he will not be sending negative vibration towards her. When he cuts out sending negative vibration towards her, she is going to feel a return of love in the relationship, which is naturally going to make her go up the emotional scale. That's the answer. Let's read from the book. So Abraham is saying, "You do not have the power to align others with their inner being. You only have the power to align yourself with your inner being. You cannot focus upon your sexual incompatibility and be in alignment with your inner being at the same time. You cannot notice that your mate is not in alignment with her inner being and being in alignment with your own inner being." This is classic. It shows up in so many places. People will come to me and they will say, "My husband is always looking at the downside. My husband is so negative. Whenever there's a decision that we need to make, he always goes towards the cons before he will look at the pros. And I don't want him to do that. Because that means that he's not making good decisions." And my answer always is, "Sweetheart, if that's how you see him, then you see him as having a fault. And if you see him as having a fault, you're sending him a negative vibration. You've got to cut that out because that's not conducive to what you want to accomplish." So Abraham is saying, "You cannot notice that your mate is not in alignment with her inner being and be in alignment with your own inner being at the same time. You cannot focus upon the absence of something that you desire and be in alignment with your inner being at the same time." So then Abraham is suggesting to this man to start visualizing, to start thinking about things that he can appreciate about his wife, and also to start visualizing having a sensual, sexual experience with her. Because, I'll read this. "When you think about sexual interaction with your mate and you feel eager or happy or sensual, you are in alignment with your source and with your desire. So over time, you are able to focus upon the subject and remain in alignment with your source. And when you do that, one of two things will happen. Either your mate will change because she will respond to your improved vibration about her, or she will be replaced by someone else. Someone else who is responding to your vibration. Because if you go high on the emotional scale and your mate does not come up, then your mate is going to leave. Something will happen to crystallize that, and another person who meets you up here on the emotional scale will take their place." Alright, um, okay. So then Abraham is saying, "Engaging in sexual interaction as inspired from connection with your inner being is a delicious physical experience while engaging in sexual interaction out of a feeling of commitment or responsibility is not." So just, just because you are in a marriage does not mean that you have to have sexual interaction even though you don't feel like it. It's not a responsibility, and you should not engage in it out of responsibility because then you're not going to enjoy it. In short, if you do not allow yourself to get into a feeling of shortage of lack because of something that another does, and you are able to maintain your alignment with source within you, what you desire must come. Alright, so then in the end, Abraham is saying, "So this conversation is not about how to get yourself into a position where you can get from another something that you desire. Instead, it is about how to align yourself with source regardless of what the other one is doing. And then by your own consistent alignment with source, you may inspire the alignment of your mate, or you might find another mate." Alright, next. Next heading, page 133, right at the bottom of the page is "Sex, Religion, and Mental Hospital Incarcerations." So Jerry says, "Some years ago, I was visiting a group of friends who were psychiatrists and psychologists who told me in essence that the majority of people who were incarcerated in a mental hospital where they worked near Spokane, Washington, that were a result of their confusion either about religion or sex." And I'm sure it was not, it was not only their confusion that put them there, but also their behavior. So Abraham says, "It's not surprising. Many people look towards religion to help them understand why they are here. And because the beginning of life happens through sexuality, then that is also a subject that is important because it's the beginning of life." So then Abraham says, "Most religions offer a pushing against sexuality. And often perceived wrongdoing is pointed towards sexual behavior in religions." I'm just reading a little piece from the book. And, and so people have this negative attitude, and a lot of people are trying to make sense of it because their desires are pulling them in one direction, and religion is pulling them in an opposite direction. So this pull that it creates inside them creates this massive confusion that they're trying to sort out. And if they can't sort it out, it just drives them crazy. That's why they end up in mental hospitals. Because they are just not able to figure it out. Why? Because their belief in religion is so strong and they believe it to be right, and their desires that are in opposition to the religion are so strong that they are, they are, the momentum is pushing them into taking action. So if momentum is, is pushing you into taking action and you're low on the emotional scale, then you're going to engage in behavior that is hurt, that is going to hurt someone else. And, and that's how you end up in a mental hospital. Because you're not able to make any sense out of the link between sexuality and religion, often. But it can be in so many other subjects that you're just not able to explain them through religion, and I can so relate to it. Um, because I remember even as a six-year-old was the first time that I asked my mother a question that I did not get a satisfactory answer for, and then I stopped asking questions because even at age six, I could tell that continuing to ask such questions was not going to end in, end well for me. So I stopped. But what if there are people out there who just... But what if there are people out there who just cannot stop or don't see the sense in. In just not asking these people the questions because it's not going well and they don't have the answers. I won't get into it, but it's a story, it's a story, the question that I asked and the answer that I got, it's a story. And, uh, of course, I've already shared with you, um. That I just, I could not fathom why so many nice people were going to go to hell just because they didn't, they were not. Born in the right religion, it just didn't make sense to me. And so I can understand that religion can create a lot of confusion. And really, it's the sign of a, a, a very intelligent questioning mind. That is asking questions, not getting an answer and therefore ending up in incarcerated in a mental hospital. Alright, then the next heading is, why do people use God and sex in vain? So Jerry's question is, and another thing I've noticed is that for some reason in our society when people are really angry. Or violent or threatening or are really trying to hurt someone's feelings, they use words. That are related to sex or religion as curse words, I thought this was a really interesting question. It seems like the worse they feel, the more they use sexual or religious words in a derogatory way to get their point across. So Abraham says, they choose the subjects that are the most meaningful or important. Impor- where does importance come from? It comes from momentum, momentum creates the importance of a subject. And so Abraham is saying that's why curse words are either religious or sexual. Then the next heading is, why does the media broadcast pain but censor pleasure, another really interesting question. Jerry says, I noticed that in our culture, it seems perfectly appropriate for television and movies. To depict the maiming of people and destruction and gore. Anything horrible as far as destroying the human body. While it seems inappropriate to show human sexuality and pleasure. I've never understood why our culture has come to the place where it can stand. Hate and anger and pain, but doesn't want to see pleasure. Abraham says, it is not a matter of they are wanting to see hate or anger and pain and not wanting to see pleasure. In fact, the opposite of that is true, people really do want to feel good and they want to see things that are successful. And beautiful and pleasurable. Many people are attracting to themselves unwanted things just because they're giving attention to them. Um, and you're, and then Abraham says something really important. And they say, you're movie makers, whether they understand the law of attraction or not. Understand that people gravitate more towards viewing unwanted things than wanted things. And we submit that the reason that is true is because there are strong active vibrations. In most people about what they do not want. That's just how we are trained or we train ourselves right out of the cradle. We train ourselves to focus on what we don't want more than we focus on what we do want. And so there's a lot more momentum on unwanted than there is unwanted. I mean, even if you observe little babies, they will say, I don't want that. No, no. And they say it, uh, forcefully, no. Shout it out, and that's pushing against. So even little babies are pushing against, so as a society, there's a lot more momentum. Thoughts bend together when they're on the same vibration, there's a lot more as humanity. Talk about the eight or nine billion people, I don't, I've lost count, I don't know how many there are on earth. Eight or nine billion people on earth, most of them are low on the emotional scale. So there is a lot of momentum, negative momentum. And that negative momentum is going to bring more that matches the negative momentum. So movie makers are just responding to this negative momentum because it has so much pulling power. It is bringing it out. So even though, uh, you know, Abraham has said one person who is aligned is more powerful than many. That are not and Abraham has said that that is what keeps the balance from tipping over. But in media, we are seeing how negativity. And even though there's so much negativity in media, there's so many nice movies as well. There's so many nice stories and and sweet things as well, right? Okay, so then, and then I- Abraham says, if you talk to people. And and I say this all the time because when I'm teaching law of attraction, I, uh, I. As I'm coaching people and I take them through exercises, I make them do exercises that expose this. This thing that Abraham is talking about here and which is that people are much more fluid. In talking about problems than they are when I ask them to appreciate something. When I tell them, talk to me about this problem for two minutes, no problem, they'll get on a roll. And they'll tell me everything about the problem that they're having. But when I ask them to appreciate a tree or anything, I say to them. What is a subject in your life that you really love and adore? And they'll pick something and then I'll say, okay, talk about it for two minutes, they can't talk about it for two minutes. They're done in thirty seconds. And sometimes even getting two thirty seconds is difficult. So. Um, so that's why there's so much pulling power towards the negative. And, um. And so Abraham is saying, and I'm reading from the bottom of page one hundred and thirty-five. Abraham says, once you've decided that the world is leaning towards anger and hate. You are no longer a vibrational match to the beauty of the world. And. Long ago, I did a video and I, I'm trying to think what the title of the video is. On YouTube, something about if you can't trust people. Um. And I don't remember the rest, but you see the thing is. That if you've decided that the world is leaning towards anger and hate, you don't trust other people. And if you don't trust other people, then you don't trust source, you don't trust God. Because. Then you can't, I mean, if you can't trust people, then you can't see the goodness that is in everyone. Because everyone at their core is love, everyone at their core is a beautiful person. And if you can't see that because you've started not trusting other people. Then you can never find alignment. I mean, forget about strangers. I know people because I've coached them or you know, worked with them is that they don't even trust their loved ones. They feel like their loved ones are out to get them. And these, these are their precious relationships, so. Hi Bev, hi Rochelle, hi Novara, and. Uh, hang on, I can't see the names. Munia. Awesome, good to see you, and Tamika. Alright. Um. So. So that's why the media is just responding to the vibration that people are sending out. Hi Stephen, good to see you. I, most of the time I can't see people unless they drop me a comment. So I don't know how Facebook works this out, I think people that I'm friends with, I can see. But if I'm not friends with you, then I can't see who you are, I just see a number. Okay, so then the next question Jerry is asking Abraham is. Um, where I'm stuck is on the whole issue of monog- monogamy. That is the way I was raised and so I assume that that's a value of mine, but I've noticed a lot of pain and fear associated with it. First of all, you have to find someone who wants the same thing. And then you have to control the person's wanting, which is not fun by itself. So Abraham then says, not only is it not fun to attempt to control over another, it is not possible. Um. And then Abraham is saying, well, there's been a lot of movement in societies back and forth. So you know, in some societies, monogamy has been promoted and in other societies. It has not been the norm, um, but there's no one way from non-physical. And Abraham says, we want you to understand that it was never your intention as you came into physical. From non-physical to find one way of living and convince and coerce all others to abide. So if you think monogamy is the right way for you, then it is the right way for you. And as long as you stay aligned with who you are, you will also find. A mate or a partner who also believes in monogamy. But if you push against the others, so if you say the others are wrong. Now you will bring them into your life because it's law of attraction. That's how it works, you cannot push against something. And and get rid of it, when you push against something, you bring it closer to yourself. So, um, so then Abraham says on page one hundred and thirty-seven. Which brings us to the first point of this question, I need to find someone who wants what I want. Coming together with with another who is in agreement with your desires, um. Makes for a good relationship and surely it is obvious that there are enough people. So Abraham says, there's no shortage of people, you can find tons of people. Who have the same beliefs as you, so it should not be difficult to find someone. But people find it difficult to fi- uh, to find an appropriate relationship for themselves. I've seen a lot of people struggle with relationships. It's a, it is a struggle that I had at one point in time in my life. And once I turned the corner, I call it turning the corner, then it was like, I want a relationship, bang. Alright. Uh, so. So there's this feeling of lack, when you feel that there is lack. Then, then you will not find the the type of person that you're looking for. Because if you feel like, um, what I, not too many people want what I want, that's a feeling of lack. You're putting it out there that there aren't enough people. So then your reality will demonstrate to you that there aren't enough people because even though there are lots of people out there. Who think and act and believe the way you do, you don't have access to them. Um, alright, moving along. So then Abraham says, people who worry about finding someone who will remain true to them. Cannot find such a person because the most active thoughts within them are worrisome thoughts of betrayal. You see, if you, if you think that there's betrayal out there, out to get you. Well then, that's what you're attracting. And then your fear is going to be justified, cause you'll say, see? I thought that would happen and now it's happened, but in reality, it's law of attraction. You are paying attention to it and that is why it's happening. So, don't pay attention to it, simple, right? Not always simple, it's simple to understand but sometimes not simple to put into practice. As I've learned. Um, and this is why I always say that law of attraction is really intellectually easy to understand. But in practicality, it is not the easiest thing to put into action. Hi Andy, good to see you there. Alright, moving along. So, in ending, Abraham is saying. When you consistently offer thoughts about your future relationship that feel good while you think them. That means you are consistently matching the desires that you have discovered as you have lived life. And under those conditions, only someone in agreement with your desires could come to you. Because you're not feeling a lack, you see this lack business shows up in everything, it shows up in religion. It shows up in health, it shows up in money, it shows up in relationships. It shows up everywhere in our life. If we just did not feel the lack of what we want, then what we want would come. Alright. Okay, so let's move along. Uh, we still have a few minutes to go, so I'm gonna keep going, the next question is, so. Is it our natural nature to have only one relationship over a lifetime? Or is that something that was imposed on us by culture or religion? Abraham says, it was your intent to interact with many others on many subjects. And whether you choose the subject of sexuality to be something. That you experience with only one or whether it is something that you want to experience with more than one or with many. It is an individual thing and your ideas about it are continually changing. And individuals can have different ideas about it because it's, it's whatever you feel you want for yourself. It's a desire, just like any other desire, and when you desire something, source answers. So, then Abraham says. That rules and laws that are meant to restrict behavior are always born out of disconnection from source. Rules and laws are always born out of fear. Fear that if you don't control other people's behavior, then, um, then something will go wrong. The fear is that something will go wrong. And laws from, you know, like societies and governments come from a place that. Oh, if this thing catches on and everyone starts behaving this way, all hell will break loose. And that is fear and it is lack of trust in human goodness. It's lack of trust. Because you have to understand that someone who is high on the emotional scale will never. Be able to do anything that hurts anyone else, because from here you cannot. The only people who hurt other people are people who are low on the emotional scale. And momentum leads them into it, momentum leads to action. It is Rochelle, it is absolutely a feeling of lack. A feeling of lack and you know, the biggest feeling of lack is lack of control. I have no control, I lack and that's the biggest fear, I have no control or what's going to happen to me tomorrow. That's a feeling of lack, law of attraction, understanding the teachings of Abraham gives us control. And so. That's why Abraham keeps telling us, the only thing anyone ever needs to do is to go up the emotional scale. That is the only thing that is ever needed. If we all just pay attention, forget about paying attention to other people, if we all just pay attention. To us going up the emotional scale, then all would be well, everything would turn out alright, okay. Um. And then Abraham says, and Abraham said this in so many different ways. In the book Abraham is saying. Uh, on page one hundred and thirty-eight, the first paragraph, the last sentence there. The most powerful force inherent in all who exist is the acknowledgement of personal freedom. And Abraham has time and time and time again told us that freedom, growth and joy. Those are the only things. We come for freedom, growth and joy. Growth is inevitable. It's like, you know, it's a, uh, you know how Abraham says that there are three steps to manifesting, ask. Uh, source answers and that part, source answering is inevitable and then you allow it. Well, it's the same thing. The growth part is inevitable. As you are giving birth to desires, you are growing. So freedom and joy, those are the things that we need to work on, freedom and joy. And we cannot have joy unless we have freedom. Within whichever paradigm we live in. We have to feel free. And Abraham says, and they've said this over and over again, that you are so free that you can choose bondage. Right? Okay. So I'm gonna read the last part of the paragraph there. Through each exposure to interacting with others. You launch continuous rockets of desire of what you prefer. And when, and. And when, and only when you are a vibrational match to the culmination of those desires. You will allow your rendezvous with someone who matches those intentions that you have gathered along your physical trail. Alignment. That's all we need. Everything is about alignment. Alright, so then the next question is about sex, art, religion and monogamy. The question is, I want to expand on what Jerry was saying earlier about the people. So this is someone in a workshop who is asking a question. Uh, questioner, I want to expand on what Jerry was saying earlier about the people in mental institutions being there. Because of their confusion about sex and religion. I am an artist and I have heard it said that all great art is inspired from sex and religion. And during this discussion about sex, I realized that. From my perspective, the ultimate relationship involves a perfect fusion of creative and sexual energy. So regardless of what society says, I should or shouldn't do in terms of my sexual choices. It feels to me that this fusion of energies is more intense and more delicious with one person. Abraham says, it is true of everything. When you are positively focused in a moment, giving your attention to some positive object of attention and therefore in complete. Alignment with source within you, your energies are aligned and your experience must be wonderful. But this is a conversation about coming into alignment with source first. By virtue of your positive attention, not a conversation about the merits of one lover versus many. So, I don't know if that really explains this question. So the questionnaire is saying, I'm an artist and I've heard it said that all great art is inspired from sex and religion. The answer to that is that over so many centuries of human life. There's a lot of momentum on religious thought as well as sex. Because, I mean, sex from the birth of the first humans, Adam and Eve. Has been part of the process of human growth. So, of course, it has a lot of momentum. And then. And then he, but this person is basically saying that. It, it would be delicious to just have one partner and Abraham, I believe in the answer that they have given. Are not committing to it. And what they are saying is that if you give all your appreciation. To one object of attention, then of course, it's going to feel to you. That your union with that object of attention is going to be most satisfying. That's all. Then the next question on page one hundred and thirty-nine is. In my own mind, I use the term life partner instead of monogamy to describe what I am looking for. Abraham says. Life partner for this moment, this moment in time. Can be a good idea. But since the details of the life you're living will always produce more clarity about what you desire. You will always be sending out new rockets of desire. The most productive and sustaining commitment that you could ever make. Would be to the continual aligning with the expansion that life causes you to discover. So it's not about staying aligned with your partner, it's about staying aligned with yourself. And you don't have to set out the intention that as I am growing. My partner and I are going to grow apart because, you know, we are becoming different people. It's just as easy to set the attend- intention that me and my partner are going to grow together. And continue to appreciate each other. Because at the end of the day, it's appreciation and joy. If you are joyful in, in the relationship, then that's all that matters. Okay. In other words, as you live life in all its details, including the person you are in love with and living with or married to. You are still sending out rockets of desires of improvement. And the non-physical source energy part of you receives each request and melts it into vibrational becoming. That is truly who you are. Your intention to keep up with that expansion is your true path to happiness. What does that mean? I mean, so many words to say just one thing. If you're aligned. If you're aligned and you're happy, you are on your way to everything that you want. And everything that you want will come to you. Alright, um, and then Abraham says one really important thing here. Many people who are worried about the loss of love enter into marital agreements. Till death, uh, death do us part. Agreements as they try to protect themselves from unwanted things. That is the opposite of what we are explaining here. And I just want to add to that, is that, um. Um. That also is an attitude of lack. It's an attitude that comes from a place of, oh, I must hang on to this. Because if I don't, then what will happen to me? That's an attitude of lack. And in everything, we have to have an attitude of abundance in order to be truly happy. Alright folks, we come to the end of our time commitment for today. We have stopped at the end of page one thirty-nine. Next week, we start and go forward from. Page one hundred and forty. And. We're getting close to the end of our. Discussion, really. So the book is, oh, the book is two hundred pages. And we are on page one hundred and forty, so. That's fun. Alright guys, love you all lots, have a super fantastic day. And amazing weekend coming up. Enjoy yourselves and I'll see you next week. Bye for now.